Test, test.
Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside as well as on our website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator in on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, our which stands one nation under God, in the visible with liberated justice for all.
We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Row call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, December 13, 2022. Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, January 10, 2023, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. And please vote.
And Commissioners, because of the issues with the voting system this morning, we'll have to do a voice vote. And for those watching at home, the vote results will not display on the screen afterwards. So Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Friend.
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to resolutions. We have resolutions D through G. We do not have need for an executive session, so the motion could include adjournment. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote. I have a row call.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Friend.
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Row call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, December 13, 2022. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, December 20, 2022. And Item C, approval of a resolution authorizing the clerk to make certain payments while the board is adjourned. Sign and die. Is there a motion to approve A, B, and C? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Row call.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Friend.
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Commissioner, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is our consent agenda, items A through N. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Row call.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Friend.
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning. Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. About three quick topics this morning. One, I'd like to present to you a letter that I sent to the City Council, which also applies to this body, because I am going to continue to push for a joint meeting with the public, with two-way conversation between the public and the Davis County Attorney and the Nebraska Attorney General in regards to the Open Meeting Act. My reason being now is that I attended a hearing at the State Legislature yesterday, very much nicer hearing than it has been in these chambers lately. Wasn't as well-attended by a body of Commissioners, but by a Lancaster County judge in relation to the election. And the denials by our government officials to look into the astounding amount of evidence that there was so much irregularity to the election counting and the certification, that it deserves public discussion and investigation with the citizens being an equal part of that, because obviously, we do not trust our politicians anymore. And there's good reason for that. Much evidence that we don't hear, but it's time for people to hear it in front of the electors. And one of these is, of course, Mike Lindell's group. This is a copy of that. Point being, it's not my words. It's many people. Seventy-five million people voted for a candidate that they say yesterday, of all times, that they are going to drum him out of office for the first time in history on unfounded things. We had eight or nine congresspeople sitting there, a committee. Well, there's been lots of committees in history. Adolf Hitler had some committees. Joseph Stalin had some committees. Now, the elections are basically controlled by a states, according to our Constitution. But these people seem to think they can take that away from the states. And I would like my representatives that we elected in the state of Nebraska, which does include you, to represent us in Congress, not them. I did not vote for anybody on that January 6 panel. They do not represent me. None of them represent the state of Nebraska. So in your legislative issues, I think you should push that, that we want this. Open Meetings Act, joint with the city and county and the Douglas County Attorney and Attorney General, so that they can set both sides straight as to what the rules under the Open Meetings Act is. I gave this speech yesterday in front of the hearing judge. Citizens are demanding it, not just me. It says right here that you point to the Open Meetings Act. Well, even yesterday down there in the hearing room, they had an outdated version of the Open Meetings Act for the citizens. That's rather ridiculous in the State House, in a hearing room, by our state government, Secretary of State. That's rather ridiculous that they weren't prepared for that. But it does indicate the intent in there is for a citizen to be able to speak at each and every meeting. Yes, it says something about not all meetings, but on each and every topic. So some of your rules are not really reasonable for a citizen. Is my time up already?
One minute.
One minute, okay. I don't need to give you copies of that. Trump's not going to give up. Now, this is a Christian-based country constitution. This is a Christian magazine. They're also proving facts about the stolen election, and we are fed up with it. Now, that committee yesterday kept repeating the big lie, the big lie, the big lie. That is Adolf Hitler's words, trying to pit the public against the Jewish people. And now our representatives that I did not elect are setting up their, using that word in relation to Mr. Trump and his supporters. Seventy-five million people voted for him, and seventy-five million people want this cleared up and him back in office because it was stolen. And there is no defense in the Constitution.
Time.
Under the immunity clause.
Thank you, Larry.
For treason and sedition. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Time. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Here we go.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I wanted to let you know that I listened to the Mental Health Committee meeting from yesterday. Sounds like you're going to have the third option of a combined, or you're going to look into it. I think that's a good idea, to look into the different facilities. That way, when you tell Jim Kavanaugh, "No" on 42nd and Center, it's a no, because you looked at all your options. But I, I'm still with putting the Corrections, I mean, putting Mental Health at Corrections, because we talk about, the county talks about restorative justice. And what I've heard from the Director of Corrections is that they have mental health components. And I don't know what that means, really. Probably checkboxes. So I, I would like to see something more, not holistic, but like having access to professionals. The Director is not a mental health professional. He's a corrections professional. So that, that he's taking the county this far into mental health, it says a lot about his work. So that's a good thing, but we're going to need more. I'd like to see more information on the combined, of the combined facility where you have the Mental Health Facility attached to Corrections, and then you have also a separate, like it was presented yesterday. That, that looks really good. And that would, for me, that's Project A. It's not Phase Five. You know, it's Project, all this is Project A. Project B, then, is getting the community to buy in into their mental health hospital. And that could be over on 42nd and Center. That's what I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to a presentation. We have a presentation of the Douglas County Impact Report. And here with us is our Communications Director, Leah Bayes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Leah Bayes, Douglas County's Communications Director, here to just go over our Douglas County Impact Report. So this is the first time you're seeing it, but I promise you, it took a lot of hard work, and it was a labor of love. So I'm just going to get started here. So really, the goal of the Impact Report is basically an annual report. So, you know, many organizations put together an annual report to show the financial condition of an organization, or to highlight the achievements throughout the year. And so with the direction from Commissioner Borgeson, we decided to highlight the important work that's being done in Douglas County by our department heads, especially throughout the pandemic. This was something that Commissioner Borgeson wanted to do for many years. And we knew that after the pandemic, we couldn't say no to this project. We had to move forward, because there's so many stories from our department heads that just we, we had to tell. And so, so this really is kind of our way to capture the work that's being done, to, you know, just persevere through the pandemic, and show the taxpayers of Douglas County, show the residents of Douglas County, just how much of an impact we're making. And so on our website, you can see the digital version, and that's what I'm looking at now. And I will just scroll kind of through this, through a few pages. I'm not going to go through the entire magazine, but I'll let you all do that. And I'll be available to answer any questions. But the, the first thing I want to just talk about is, I do want to thank Kelly Lane Design and Brad Williams Photography. I contracted them to do some, some work for this magazine, and they did a phenomenal job. So with that, I'm just going to kind of move to a couple pages. So it opens up with, obviously, an introduction letter from the Chairwoman of the Board, and Patrick Bloomingdale. We flip to all of your beautiful faces, showing the districting map. We go to a financial statement from Joe Lorenz and some graphics. We do a two-page spread on the Justice Center project, being that it's one of the largest projects in Douglas County's history. We highlighted Operation Greenlight, and also a photo down below from Ralston, just highlighting the different communities within Douglas County. Also important work done by the Election Commission during the COVID-19 era. And one of my favorite stories is this story, Innovation During Crisis. And I have to call out Mike Seanlow, Douglas County GIS Administrator, because he saw a need, and, you know, wasn't assigned the task. Nobody came to him and said, "You have to do this." But instead, he wanted to help the Health Department during COVID-19. And so he stepped up and said, "How can we help?" He saw COVID, he saw the COVID-19 dashboard that Johns Hopkins University was doing, and he said, "We can do that locally." And so without anyone telling him that he, he needs to do this, he took that, you know, on his own and ran with it, and created the first COVID-19 dashboard in the state, and that was, and that was ours. And it continues to gain millions of views and traffic. So that was just one of the stories that we highlighted there. We also talked about the Health Department. And then we break down highlights from each individual department. We rarely get an opportunity to highlight some of the day-to-day operations that our Douglas County Department Heads do on a daily basis. And so this is really an opportunity for them to shine and just show the important work that they're doing. And then also, we have a staff directory, get to know your county administration staff, and also an elected official's directory. So that's about it.
Well, thank you, Leah. And I have to say, this is a long time coming. I've wanted to do it for a long time, but Leah really, in terms of the creative arm of all this, really did an outstanding job on it. And so I want to thank her for her hours and hours and hours of long work on it, getting all of the information from department heads, taking all the pictures. I mean, you, you did a very, very thorough and excellent job. So working with you on this was a, was a privilege and an honor, and I'm, I'm happy that, that it turned out the way it turned out.
Thank you. I will also just add that we will have copies for all of you Commissioners available if you wanted to hand those out to your constituents. We'll also have them in some of our high-traffic offices. John Ewing, our Douglas County Treasurer, has agreed to allow us to hand them out at his offices. So we'll have some copies available there for residents. We'll also have copies available in our office and the Douglas County Commissioners Office, LC2.
Commissioner Friend.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Hey, Leah, so can somebody download off the, did you say this? Can somebody download the PDF or something off the website and, and actually get it yet, or?
Yeah, so it's available on our website right now. So it's the top story. So you can go there. You can see this flip book, which is kind of what I have open here. It's just, you can flip through the pages, or you can download a PDF of it.
Okay, great. This is, this is a really, this is very good, Leah. And the only criticism I have is, why is there a picture of Patrick Bloomingdale twice? There's one on the back page, and there's one, can you speak to that?
I'm signing autographs after the meeting, so.
I did, I did have to beg him to even allow me to take his picture at all. So I made sure to get it in there twice.
We'll, we'll take it offline. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Again, thank you very much, Leah, for all the work you did on it.
You're welcome. Thanks.
With that, we will move to a public hearing. Travis's Merchants of Venice LLC applicant rezoning from MU Mixed Juice and Ag to MU Mixed Juice, a proposed Lot 1. The location is 26404 West Center Road, Waterloo. And with us today is Kent Holm, our Environmental Services Director. Good morning, Kent.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kent Holm, Environmental Services Director. Have before you today two public hearings. One is a rezoning, and one is the preliminary and final plat for this particular project. Also with us today is Travis Harlow, the applicant, and Dan Kudlech, representing the County Engineers Office. Also have online, I believe, Julie Augen with JEO, who is assisting us with, with planning and zoning items right now. The County Planning Commission heard this at their November meeting and recommended approval for it. I'm certainly willing to answer any questions you have. But basically, this is a, it's a very, very straightforward project. And Mr. Harlow is obtaining some adjacent land from, from Lyman Ritchie, I believe. And there is a need on the part of Lyman Ritchie to, to move forward. They want to try to finish up this land transaction before the end of the year, if possible. The only item that we really have outstanding that's related to this is there is a subdivision agreement that talks about the responsibilities of both parties. And one of the items there is, is there's a, a right-of-way dedication on 264th Street. And as part of that new right-of-way dedication, there are some underground storage, fuel storage tanks that Mr. Harlow has as part of his existing operation. This is a, the new dedication, so he's dedicating that property to the, to the county for future potential use on that, that road right-of-way. And the issue here is really, we just want to make sure that the county is indemnified appropriately. Working with Liz O'Connor, Deputy County Attorney, and we are confident that we will have that, that language worked out here this week. What I'm asking you for today is to go ahead and consider and approve the rezoning and the preliminary and final plat. That will allow us to go and get those signatures on that. And then, Madam Chair, we'll, we'll bring the subdivision agreement back, and we have that completely finalized, and have your signature for that, and they'll be able to proceed.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak during the public hearing on the first one? Item A. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Friend, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? Please vote, I mean, row call.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Friend.
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And then, public hearing, Item B, the final.
Yeah. And again, same comments there. Very straightforward. We have a couple of lots here and an outlot. Straightforward, asking for your approval.
Anyone here wishing to speak during the public hearing on Item B? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What's the will of the Board?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Row call.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Friend.
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks for being here, Travis. Next, we'll move to committees, the first being the Budget Committee. It's the Budget Report as presented. And then, the other one is the Human Resources. It's the Personnel Report from Civil Service as presented. And then, at this time, no new legislative items. We do have need for an executive session for personnel.
It's a legal advice and, and collective bargaining.
Collective, okay, union negotiations and.
Legal advice.
Legal advice. And before we go into executive session, I do want to note that we do have a Child and Youth Committee meeting following this meeting at 1:00. Again, our last scheduled meeting is, of 2022, is today. And the first one scheduled for 2023 will be January 10, 2023, at 9:00. And Commissioner Friend has asked for a point of privilege.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And there, this isn't going to take very long, I promise. Everybody breathes like, "Poor and personal privilege, Friend. What's going to happen?" There's, this is generalizing a little bit, but there's, I've always said this, and I, I think I can take credit for it. There's two types of politicians in this world in general. There's, there's one, neither of them are bad necessarily. There's one that, that moves into positions, does good work, and, and tries to stair-step, and tries to climb. And there's others that, that pick out these civil, their civic duties, and they, they're, they're there. I mean, they, they enjoy it. They, for, for a variety of reasons, they stay in that particular spot. Again, neither of them are necessarily bad. The funny thing about this is, my cousin John, John Friend, is neither of those type of politicians. As a matter of fact, I don't think he likes politicians very much. I'd have to ask him again. I haven't asked him for a long time. John's been the clerk of the court for almost 16 years. Before that, he was a police officer. He started when I was running around at Creighton University in 1982. And he served on the Omaha Police Department for years. He retired as a captain. And I think he served this county really well. They moved to, in, I think, right after he started, they moved the County Court Case Management System to the Justice System, which, if you ask him, was pretty arduous, and it took some time. And I just wanted to let you know, his, his dad used to sit right where, I think, right where Chris or PJ sat for probably three decades, almost, no, not three decades, three terms, as a city councilman. I'm honored to be up here where, where, not just where he sat, but others sat. And I think John has carried that forward. John is a good husband. He's a good father. He's got. is a good husband. He's a good father. He's got police officers. I think they're pretty good police officers. His sons are here in this community. And John will be missed, but I thank him for his service, and the reason he's not here is because we didn't invite him. So, that's not true. Madam Chair, I just wanted to thank John for his service, and thank you all for giving me the time.
Thank you, John, and that goes for all elected officials that will be leaving us this year. We thank you for your dedication and service to Douglas County. I also want to, on behalf of the board, wish you all a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and Happy Holidays, and let's hope that in 2023, we can become a kinder, gentler, more compassionate society. With that, roll call.
Actually, Madam Chair--
Oh, no. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Motion to adjourn passes seven to zero or adjourn at ten oh three AM.